Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. Let's get started with today's Legislative and Human Resources Committee for Tuesday, May 22nd. Item one today, public comment. Do we have any public comment today? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to item two, approval of minutes from May 8th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Commissioner Bonk, support by Commissioner Coleman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? All right. Passed. Moving on to item three, front of the court, performance measurement. Dan, come up. For tech.
Actually clocked this at seven minutes, so I'll jump right into it.
All right. We won't hold you to it.
All right. I'm just going to start with a quick look at some year-to-date measures we're tracking. This goes through April. Ninety-three percent of our support reviews were completed within 90 days. That's a self-imposed deadline. We have by statute 120 days, so we're doing well in that. Eighty-nine percent of our custody and parenting time investigations have been completed within 90 days. That's a court-proposed deadline. On collections on support, both current charges and arrears. Last year, we were first among our peer counties. We measure against the largest counties in the state. And on arrears collection, we reached 81.43 percent. That's the first time larger counties exceeded 80 percent. That's a federal goal, 80 percent. So I believe we're on track to exceed that this year. We're really focused this year on collections on the current charges. We came in second among our peer counties, Oakland County, last year. But looking at where we are at this point, we'll probably come in what we did last year at about 77 percent. We do try to answer our phone calls within five minutes. Year-to-date, we're at 70 percent. We try to reach 75 percent. So we're a little under our goal, but I'm really encouraged that since April 1st, we're at 82 percent. So we've got our phone room fully staffed and trained, and they're really doing well right now. And I hope to maintain that. We answered over 86,000 calls last year. Ninety percent of those were handled by our customer service reps instead of transferring them out. So it's like one-stop shopping when somebody calls in. Really, our primary focus this past year has been on implementing the recommendations from the Community Engagement Task Force. Some of you are on that committee. One of those recommendations was to work with the Health Department, DHHS, and the prosecutor to promote early engagement of parents through expedited paternity testing or DNA testing, and expedited custody, parenting time, and support orders. I handed out, you have a brochure from the KEEP program. That's Kent's Early Engagement Parenting Program brochure. Should be in front of you. We did collaborate with the prosecutors and the Health Department. We made presentations to the Health Department subgroups, the Home Visiting Provider Network, Health Department Community Wellness Division, the Maternal-Infant Health Program. These home visitors are the ones that are going to be going out in the field and inviting expectant mothers and fathers to participate in this program. We thought that was the best way to reach them. Our goal is to establish paternity and these support and custody parenting time orders within four weeks instead of four months, as is currently what's happening. Our role at the front of the court will be meeting with the parents to try to resolve the parenting time and custody issues, and the prosecutor will work on the support order. We hope to launch that in June. I was hoping for earlier, but we got hung up on a couple little details, so that's ready to go. The recommendation, Task Force, to expand outreach is, we're continuing that effort to engage the community, provide more information, resolve specific case problems. Really want to reach those parents who need our services. We've expanded now to the Hispanic Center and also Urban Family Ministries since last fall. In fact, we did a large toy drive for the inner-city kids around Christmas time for Urban Family Ministries. We also go out monthly to Michigan Works, both at the DHHS building and on Straight Street. We go to Strong Fathers and Guiding Lake Mission. Periodically, we're at the Kent County Correctional Facility, Reentry Program, Bellamy Creek Prison, and Salvation Army. We actually attended 84 outreach events in 2017, so that's a record for us. It was recommended that we sign a staff member to contact payers with new support orders. We did that in June of 2017. And this is a new approach. We actually have a full-time staff member reach out to these payers by telephone, sometimes even social media if they're hard to contact. And the purpose is to engage them early and make sure they understand the child support order, and as well as understand FOC processes and procedures. In the past, our first contact was typically when we initiated enforcement. Maybe we'd meet them at a show cause hearing, or when we find them on a bench warrant. So many of these payers are appreciative that we've reached out to them. Many of them with default orders from the prosecutor's office didn't know that, some of them even know they had a support order. And they didn't know really what was going on, too. Explained it to them. It'll be interesting for able to somehow track to see how effective this is. We're trying to look into that. It was recommended that we contract with a community-based entity to reach noncompliant payers who are facing a contempt hearing. That's still a work in progress. We've got to go ahead from DHHS to proceed with this because we want to make sure it's qualified as a 4D activity for funding. We need to figure out some of the funding still and put that out for bid. Our deputy program was recommended that they try to resolve 85 percent of the warrants without arrest. I think we knocked that out of the park last year. We hit 96 percent of those warrants were resolved without arrest. That's 619 warrants, only lodging 21 individuals. They collected $461,820. I think we have a great partnership going with the Sheriff Department, and really appreciate that they agreed to partner with us. We've expanded our capacity to take credit card payments, both at the office and also at the courthouse now during show cause days. That's working well. It was recommended we create an ongoing customer service survey. I've been working with the State Court Administrator's Office on this. A survey's been developed. It's based on procedural justice questions such as, does the client feel here she's been hurt? Were things explained to them? Do they feel they're treated fairly? Questions like that. And this is ready to be launched. My contact at the State Court, I think, is in Europe. And once she gets back, I'm going to get on her to launch that. Finally, the Task Force recommended an increased role of the Citizen Advisory Committee. Commissioner Bukowski now attends the meetings. He's a welcome addition. We answer questions about performance, and we also answer any questions about incoming grievances. We had 18 grievances last year. Seventeen of those we denied, one we acknowledged in part. The CAC agreed with us on 17, and agreed in part on one of those with us. Other significant accomplishments, again, on collections. In comparison with the other counties, we're number-one collection on arrears, number-two collections on current, and we're working on that. Our Responsible Parent Program, that continues to grow. We added a second full-time case manager and an assistant last year. Once in the program, the case manager will determine appropriate referrals for job placements, whether support review is necessary to right size of the order, offer information about parenting time issues, and may even reinstate the driver's license if it was suspended for not paying the child support. RPP's partnered with a lot of agencies and employers. We have 19 agency contacts now and 15 employer contacts. We're expanding those resources that we can reach out to to help noncompliant payers find employment and comply with their support orders. We recently partnered with 70 times seven Life Recovery, and that will help find employment for payers with felonies. So that's a pretty big deal for us. They're really eager to get some referrals, and we're eager to give them. So we're getting a lot of individuals into that program. They're holding monthly outreaches in this program at Michigan Works, Urban Family Ministries, Strong Fathers, Hispanic Center, Guiding Light Mission. And I'm pleased to announce our new Responsible Parent Program drop-in center that's opening up at our office, probably this week or next week. It's located right at our office. Payers in the program can meet with the caseworkers while in appointments, see job listings, even apply online. We're going to have three computer terminals there for the participants to try to look for work.
That's great.
So I'm not really aware of any FOC office that has this, so I'm eager to see this program continue to expand. Our goal really this year is to schedule the first appointment in this program within 14 days after it's referred. We were at 81 percent in 2017. We'd like to see at least 75 percent of those who complete the program actually find employment. And the last of our significant accomplishments I want to mention is the animated videos that we have. Last year, I showed on the screen one of the earliest ones we had. We've added eight more. That was in partnership with GBSU and North Park Montessori students. We have eight new how-to videos that are played. You can see them on our website, or you can see them in our lobby. We play them continuously throughout the day. Other counties, the court, and even the state has taken notice and they're interested in doing some of these videos themselves. Just a quick note on obstacles and challenges. I do believe we need to consistently answer 75 percent of the incoming calls within under five minutes. It has been difficult to fully staff that phone room. We have high turnover. It's a stressful job. And we're actually promoting a lot of folks from within that department, so then it creates vacancies, and then we have to train and all that. We have 12 customer service reps answer the phones. Several others jump on when it gets real busy. But again, I'm encouraged that since April 1st, we've answered over 82 percent of the calls under five minutes. I'd also like to resolve and process more warrants within the warrant department itself because we have a lot of bench warrant walk-ins and calls coming in to resolve warrants. A third arraignment case manager would be helpful, and we're kind of looking at that. And finally, just a note on what I think our greatest strength is going forward. I think a lot of us are passionate in our office about our mission. We have a lot of long-term employees at every level. They really know our system well. There's a lot of institutional knowledge there about what we've done and what does and doesn't work. So overall, I want to report that I feel positive about the office and what we're accomplishing.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan today? Mr. Cornick.
Thank you, Dan, for all your great work, great brochure here. And I was involved in that Community Engagement Task Force a year and a half ago or so, and we did some listening of the general public. You know, a lot of people showed up. And the biggest complaint that they had was getting returned phone calls when they leave a message and emails. Is that something that you've addressed? And I see that you're answering the 82 percent of the calls within five minutes, but when someone doesn't get through and they leave a voicemail, or if they just send an email, how are you monitoring that and returning those phone calls and emails so people know that you at least received them and you're working on whatever their concern might be?
Our caseworkers have 48 hours to get back to the individual if it's left on their voicemail, so they've been accomplishing that.
Is that a new goal, Dan, or is that something?
We've had that for quite a while now.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we did hear what they were saying, and it's always been kind of an issue with the office, the phone. I don't think we've ever had so many customer service reps answering the phone at this time. And they're all trained, and I'm pretty confident we'll keep that 82 percent going. I'm really getting on them about it right now.
Great. So then you don't get as many complaints from the public?
Right. And I haven't personally been hearing complaints, but I...
I think people just had an opportunity to come out and vent, and they probably took advantage of that, so.
Yeah, I did look up some of those, and I think we did talk to them.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Dan, and to your whole team. This is a great report, since it appears that the short story here is that everything involved with RPP is ordinarily well. I mean, I think it's really nice that primary complaints was about starting off with bench warrants and going straight to detainment, and it's a number to have hit 96 percent. So kudos to your whole team on that. Just a couple of quick questions on your bullet point two under accomplishments. Can you explain a little bit more about what these regular outreaches look like? I mean, is it basically, are you going out in the field and having the office available to people?
Yes, we have caseworkers go out there, either through the RPP program or the regular caseworkers. And we've purchased tablets where we can get our state system right there remotely, and we can pull up the case if somebody has a case with us, and we can answer case-specific questions. And it's worked out really well, having that access to all that information. And if they have a warrant, usually we don't dispose of it right there. We make arrangements for them to take care of it. We don't have them arrested if they come to us. And we also have folks that just want general information about the office that we provide.
Great. And then I'm looking at, well, I guess the back of the second-to-last page about Child Support Enforcement Unit. And the last indicator there is percentage of payers who appeared at their bond-out hearing. See what's going on there?
Yeah. When our deputies have contact with a payer with a warrant, they'll usually reduce the bond. You know, you can pay a bond so you're not held until you can be brought before a judge. They'll typically reduce the bond if they're not able to pay the full bond, and then they're given an appearance notice to show up the following Wednesday. And a lot of them are showing up. They didn't used to. So, you know, having our deputy contact and explain the program to them and engage them more has been really effective. So much that we're having sometimes too many people showing up on Wednesday mornings for those bound-out hearings, but...
Okay, so this 69 percent, that's a success story. It's not a...
Yeah, it used to be in the 50s.
Right. And what happens to those 31 percent that missed that?
Most of them, oh, well, they still have the warrant out there. Some of them who bond out, pay a lower bond or the full bond, and give a notice to show up, sometimes they don't show up, so we have to reissue the warrant again.
Great. Thanks.
Commissioner Taylor.
Good morning, Dan. Want to also express my appreciation for the response, the continuous improvement work that you do. And I noticed that somewhat in that there are eight new performance measures here that don't have any history. I assume that's because they were begun this past year. And one's already been mentioned, and I just want to try to get a little sense because I appreciate the percentage of bench warrants that were resolved without arrest measure as being pretty significant. But I really don't have any context. I mean, 96 percent sounds great, but can you give a, do you have any sense of where that might have been, even though you don't have the precise data for previous years? Were we at more like 75 percent, 50 percent? Can you give us some sense of that?
Well, in the past, we didn't have the deputy program. We didn't have the two detectives engaging these folks and giving them information and trying to resolve these things. Other law enforcement agencies would just have to arrest them. They didn't have any choice. They'd arrest them, and the person either could bond out for the full bond amount or not. So a lot of these folks were being held. So it's a significant thing for us to be able to resolve so many without having to actually lodge them. And it's good for the county not to have to pay for that lodging as well.
Well, that's interesting. So we're looking at, on the next page, 619 were resolved without arrest. That's a lot of jail days.
It is.
Okay.
I agree.
Thanks.
Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
I didn't mean to intentionally miss your presentation. Sorry about that. Maybe the people that block Monroe did want me to miss it. On the measures for 90 days completion of your investigations recommendations, where does the 90 days come as the target metric?
That's what the court wants to shoot for, to try to get these custody...
The State Court Administrator?
No, that's our circuit court.
The circuit court set that?
Yep. It's been in place for a while now. And so that's what we try to, try to come under that 90 days as best we can. Sometimes it's delayed a little bit because maybe we won't get information like a psychologist's report or other information, so sometimes we'll go past that 90 days, but then we report back to the court why there's the delay.
So 90 days to you probably seems like a very short period of time. If you're the person going through it, it probably seems like a forever time. Is the 90 days really built in because it takes that much time to do the investigations, or because staffing only allows you to handle so many cases?
Yeah, I mean, we can only handle so many referrals each year, but the court also wants to make these cases move along because you have a lot of these cases with some serious custody issues, and they need to get that resolved, so the court wants us to really move on these.
Well, that's my sense, is that if you have a tough custody situation, 90 days where kids are kind of bouncing back and forth, and not quite sure, that can seem like a very long time. I don't know if you had any thought about looking whether we tighten that target a little bit, or whether it is what it is?
Tough to tighten it. One thing we're kicking around is maybe appearing at some of these custody hearings where the parties represent themselves without attorneys. And they, what we'd like to do is maybe talk to them ahead of time before they go in front of the judge, and see if we can resolve it. And if not, we can narrow the issues down. That'd be helpful for the court because they have these parties representing themselves, and it's hard for them to articulate really what the issue is. So that's one pilot program we want to, we're going to present to the judges today, see what they think about it, and maybe pilot something like that.
It's not one of your metrics, but if the number of complaints I hear is one of them, then you're doing well because those complaints are down significantly.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, Dan, I just want to acknowledge efforts and the work of your department over the last year because there's a lot that has been accomplished, and I want to thank you for taking a look at things we can do to make sure that people retain their driver's license or get them back so that they can get to work, or at least continue looking for a job to help pay their child support. Because last year, I know I mentioned, it wasn't in the initial report, but I mentioned I had a lot of complaints from young men who lost their license. So I saw that in the report amongst a lot of other things. Back to what Jim was saying when he said the number of bench warrants resolved without arrest by FOC deputies. Do we know how many arrests they did make?
Other 21 individuals lodged.
So there was 21 lodged and 600, 400? Was it, how many were resolved without an arrest?
619.
Okay, 619. Another accomplishment there. How much money does it take to fall behind in child support before it's considered a
There's no specific figure out there. We've spoken with the Attorney General. Usually if you're 8,000 or above, typically you can be in the AG's radar that they might want us to refer those cases. I've seen it as low as 5,000.
I was going to say, I had a few people come to me who were in the range of 4,000 to 5,500. How does the District Court, 63rd District Court, or people who investigate this matter be able to have such a scale of what can be a felony so that these young men who are charged with a felony and sent to prison are, you know, can feel like they're being treated fairly when they are complaining to me that, hey, I owe 4,500, I owe 5,100, I know somebody who owes 7,000, he's not getting a felony, and I'm on my way to prison?
Well, these aren't really all referrals from the front of the court. A lot of times, the payees will contact the Attorney General, and the Attorney General will investigate. They're hooked up to the same state system as we are. They have access to all the payment information, and they make the decision whether or not to charge an individual. So it's not really an FOC function.
And when we look at the Supreme Court basically outlawing deputies' prison, and people going to prison because they're poor, a lot of these young men that I've seen that went to prison over this last 24 months are basically poor, jobless, or felon stuck in low-paying jobs, or no jobs. Is there anything we can do to start addressing people getting felonies for child support? And like I said, I know that's handled at the Attorney General level, but that scale is kind of bizarre, that you can be in a room with six people, and somebody may be the lowest on the totem pole on what he owes on child support, but he's headed to prison.
I think early engagement's the best thing. You know, when an individual gets a default order from the prosecutor's office, doesn't even know they have the order sometimes because they were unresponsive when they were served the papers, and then they, they're on the run, basically, when they find out that we're trying to get a hold of them. So once we get to them right in the beginning, we want to draw them in, we want to make sure that they have the ability to pay. That's critical, that the support order is set right. Before, when the person didn't participate, they'd have to guess at their income, okay? And then they'd maybe set the support order too high. So, you know, the early engagement, I think, is going to be key to resolving these things.
And the charges are initiated at the Attorney General. What level of prosecutors prosecute these cases? Is it county level, or does the state have someone actually go into court to prosecute this?
They have investigators and attorneys from the AG assigned to different parts of the state, so they have somebody assigned to this area.
Okay. Thank you, and keep up the good work. We got a long way to go, but you accomplished a lot this year.
Thank you much.
Any other questions for Dan? I have one. As a child of divorce, you guys used to do a really good program where you'd make both the parents go to a four-hour class on basically how to get along. Do we still do that in Kent County?
Yeah, PAC, the Parent Awareness Component.
Yeah, that was, I did sit through it. It was great. And I just want to highlight, you know, we went through a lot of numbers today and a lot of statistics. you know, we went through a lot of numbers today and a lot of statistics, but, you know, these thirty-nine thousand cases represent kids and families, and what you do is so important, and sometimes you're the only voice of reason in a very hostile situation, so thank you for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, on to item four, sixty-third District Court, Performance Measurements Review. Hillary?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, good morning, and thank you very much for the opportunity to have us here this morning. Judge Smolensky and Judge O'Hara are on the bench this morning, but they asked me to send their greetings to you. And we have some of our team members with us today. Matt Mapes is our Deputy Court Administrator-Majestate, Bobby Thalen, our Case Management Manager. We have Tara Decker, who is our Collections Clerk and Representative of our Collections Department, which is Tara. Michelle Bomarito, who is a Criminal Clerk of Record, representing our Criminal Department. And we also have Dawn Colenbrander, who's our Landlord-Tenant Clerk, representing Civil Department. Megan Kirby is our Chief Probation Officer, and Kevin Zidima are a probation officer who represent that office. They are both in meetings this morning with probationers and also send their greetings. Before we get started on our, the main part of our presentation, I just wanted to take a minute to thank all of you on the committee for your support of our second deputy that we added this year. So now we have two deputies covering our four courtrooms. Usually we have about three courtrooms, excuse me, going at any one time, and even the first week of having the second deputy, we noticed a difference. So we often will have two trials going at one time, assaultive cases in both courtrooms. We have a lot of people in the hallways, people that aren't necessarily fond of each other or getting along, and having that second person in the building has really helped maintain order, so thank you very much for that. All right, so here's just a quick overview. We're going to talk today a little bit about alignment with board priorities, our key performance metrics, some significant budget issues and accomplishments, some key collaborations, and a look ahead into the future. Whenever we do a project or in our daily work, we always go back to what are our missions and what are our goals. And so our mission is that we are a county-funded, independent branch of government. We're committed to the prompt, courteous, and fair dispensation of justice by adjudicating cases in a timely manner, using effective and efficient case management techniques, adhering to the highest standards that maintain the statutory and constitutional rights of all citizens, monitoring enforcement of judgments, and also, last but not least, being responsible fiscal stewards. Brief overview of our court. We do have two District Court Judges. Judge Smolensky is our Chief Judge, and Judge O'Hara. We're a trial court. We have limited jurisdiction, which means that there are specific things that we can address: civil lawsuits, up to twenty-five thousand dollars; all preliminary faces of every felony that is alleged to have been committed in our jurisdiction. So those felony cases start with us. If the courts find that there is probable cause, then they're bound over to the Circuit Court downtown. We do adult misdemeanor cases up to one year in jail, tickets, civil infractions, landlord-tenant evictions, and small claims cases, which are cases that individuals come in, they represent themselves, they tell their story, it's quickly adjudicated, no attorneys are involved, and that's damages of six thousand dollars or less. So this shows our jurisdiction. This is a map of Kent County. Our court's jurisdiction is all of Kent County, so all the green areas, except the cities of Grand Rapids, Kentwood, Walker, Granville, and Wyoming. So a very diverse area, a very large geographic area. Before we get to the number crunching, we really wanted to emphasize that people are what we're all about, and so the people that work at our court, and also the people that we serve. And I could have twenty pages of pictures, but we just kind of put a few in here, including some people who are here today and who all helped pull this presentation together. Going on to our metrics. Our objective for misdemeanors is to adjudicate ninety-five percent within one hundred and twenty-six days of arraignment. Arraignment is the first appearance of the defendant before the magistrate or the judge. It's when they find out what they're facing, the maximum penalties, and also about their rights, and so we're very consistent over time with that particular metric. No real change, it's always around ninety-four, ninety-five percent. Obviously, our goal is to be at ninety-five. Felonies. Prelim exam. Our goal is to have seventy-five percent of prelims concluded within twenty-eight days of arraignment. So the case starts with arraignment. Preliminary exam is the hearing at which the District Court Judge determines whether there's probable cause to believe a crime has been committed, and that this particular defendant was the one who have committed it, and then if so, the case is moved on to Circuit Court, if not, it's dismissed. And you'll see that that varies over time. We've looked at those numbers, and what we found is that a lot of it depends on adjournments. And so we're digging into why was it eighty-nine percent last year, rather than what it has been at ninety-two, ninety-three percent? Again, that's well over our goal of seventy-five, but we always want to know, why has there been a dip? Sometimes what we're suspecting is that it depends on how, you know, quote-unquote, "big" the case is, so attorneys might agree on both sides to adjourn that prelim for a little while to make sure that justice is done. Civil cases are very steady over time. Ninety-eight percent is our goal, adjudicating within four hundred fifty-five days of filing, so that's beginning to end. It's generally around ninety-nine or a hundred percent. Eviction cases, so this is looking at judge cases, not jury trials. Our goal is ninety-five percent of non-jury eviction cases adjudicated within one hundred and twenty-six days of filing, and we're generally well above that. Small claims cases, as I mentioned, the small claims cases are cases where there are no attorneys involved whatsoever. So two people come in, they peacefully settle a money situation up to six thousand dollars. The struggle in those cases is keeping them going. There are two pressure points in those cases. The first is getting them served. So a case comes in, it's filed by the plaintiff, the defendant has to be served and notified that they have the case in front of the court. If that isn't done, the case is done. And so that's one pressure point. And the second one is that individuals who don't do this for a living ask for more adjournments, and are granted more adjournments, because we want to make sure that everyone has their day in court. So there's that constant tension, giving people their day in court, and yet moving the cases along. And so we are not at our objective. We're generally around ninety percent. We dropped to eighty-four this last year. We did discover what that was all about. So if a case is not served within one hundred and twenty-six days, under the court rules, they say it's deemed dismissed. That means it's done. To close it out in our case management system, we need to get an order in, right? So the case is actually done, but that last stop was not being done before the one twenty-six, or right at the one twenty-six days for all the cases. So we've cleaned that up, and I expect that number's going to go back up. Civil infraction cases are, like I said, anything from a zoning, noise, or garbage-burning violation, to parking, to local or state traffic. And our goal is ninety-eight percent adjudicated within eighty-four days. That's solid, and always steady at about ninety-eight percent. Before I go on, I just wanted to point out that we gave you a replacement last page for our numbers. There was a typo on that, and that's what that was on your desks. Our major budget issues all revolve around technology for the next couple of years, and specifically making sure that we are ready for state-mandated e-filing. It's the Supreme Court Administrator's Office's goal to have every single state in Michigan paper-free and e-filing at some point. So this tiny map, you can't really see it, but that's just there to demonstrate that SCAO has a plan for different waves, the different regions that are going to be brought onboard with this system. So right now, there are several courts that have been pilot courts for a number of years. Oakland is one, Ottawa County Circuit is another. We're finding that generally those have been Circuit Courts, civil cases with attorney involvement, voluntary participation, business courts. So participants who have the technological resources and the know-how to want to be using e-filing. Now we're going to spread out to probate court, the other Circuit Courts, and District Court. And District Court is a different kind of animal than Circuit Court. We are much more self-represented, we are really a people's court in the best possible sense, and so we need to make sure that we have a robust technological base, so that we can serve the people that we serve. People that maybe have internet only on their phone. So we have to have, we have to develop some kiosks and so on, so that people can come to court, learn what they need to do, sit down at a computer, do it, file it. We don't want to be in a situation, as some other counties had suggested, have the people go to the public library, they've got computers. Well, our closest public library is miles away, and we have a lot of, our population that uses our court, that don't have cars. And so it is not our goal to have someone come in and say, okay, now leave, and then come back. So a lot of those kind of issues. One really boring but expensive issue is that we are going to require a second fiber-optics cable to our courthouse. We have one, and we need a redundant cable, so that when we are paper-free, we can actually function at that time. So we're really, really pushing SCAO to give us a timeline, when is this going to happen? We are in the next wave. Originally, they told us it would be 2018, and we'd have six months' notice. We haven't gotten that notice, I don't think it's going to happen in 2018. They're still working on the model. Anticipate sometime in 2019, so more to come on that. Some of our great accomplishments this year, fully integrated a scheduling module. So I'm going to translate that. What we have is a computer system that we keep track of all our cases on, and we purchased a program that sits on top of that and works with that, which is a calendar program. Prior to switching to this, we had a paper calendar that our Case Management Manager, Bobby Thalen, kept track of. We had one person doing that for obvious reasons, we didn't want the docket to be touched by too many people and prevent some confusion. But that is a very time-intensive thing, to have a clerk who's scheduling, have to then go in, check with somebody else, and then go back and forth. And so what we did was, we collaborated with some other courts, Lansing, Fifty-four A, Muskegon, and some of our staff went and checked it out. Hey, how is it working for you? They loved it, we purchased it. Lansing District Court volunteered, hey, we'll come over and train you. They came over, trained us how to use it, which was a fantastic collaboration. This has really cut down on inefficiencies, because now all the clerks can just go ahead and go in, they can see if a slot is filled. Such a simple thing, but really has made a difference, and I want to commend our staff, because it sounds really simple, and it is, and yet making that change was a multi-step process that really took a lot of work for a lot of people. We now have what's called real-time dispositions in the courtroom, and that means that instead of our old system, where the judge would speak, and we'd have a clerk in the courtroom that would make bench notes, and then that would be taken downstairs to another clerk who would type up a judgment, meanwhile, the defendant or the party would come and wait at the window to get the paperwork. Now we're doing all of that in the courtroom, and so as the judge is speaking, the disposition clerk, who used to be downstairs, is in the courtroom typing. And so judge is running a hearing, makes a ruling, goes right from the judge's mouth to the clerk's ear to the paper, that's done, the individual goes and sits at the side, while the paperwork's completed, judge is on to the next case. And so we have really cut down on that wait time for our court users. It used to be anywhere from twenty minutes to sometimes, you know, forty-five minutes and up, if we were really busy. Now the only reason to go back downstairs is to go ahead and pay any fines. That is working so well that we're going to expand it to probation violation hearings as well. This is another thank you to this committee. We were able, with your support, to add two new probation officers in January 2017. And the reason that we did that was to increase, really, our service levels. So our probation officer's day is just as busy now as it used to be, but they have fewer individuals reporting to them, and so they're able to spend more time working with people and hopefully having a better result. All of our staff participated in Equity and Social Justice Workshops through HR last year. That is a core value of our court. We serve a diverse community, we are a diverse population at the court. This year, we're all doing cultural intelligence workshops as well. We have loop technology in our courthouse, which means that people that have fancy hearing aids can just push a button or use a remote, and the feed from the microphone's going to go directly into their ears. For those people who cannot afford hearing aids, or whose hearing aids do not have that capability, this year, we implemented portable devices. So they're kind of about this big, think of an old Walkman or a really, really fat iPod, headphones, on-off switch, volume, and people are good to go. And we're finding that we do have people ask for them at the counter, but often, the judges or one of the clerks will notice in the courtroom that someone is struggling to hear, and then quietly and diplomatically make that offer, and we are finding that people really appreciate that. So that has been a great enhancement. Some collaborations, I know we touched a little bit in the last presentation on ability to pay. When someone doesn't pay their court fines, they receive a notice to come to court for what's called a show cause hearing, and to show why they haven't paid. If they don't show up, a warrant is issued for their arrest. And so we got together with all of the other District Courts last October, and had a month-long waiver program. This was initiated by Kentwood, Judge Kelly, and Michelle White, the Court Administrator there, reached out to all of us. Michelle White and I worked on a press release that Lisa LaPlante was instrumental in getting out to just more organizations than I even knew existed, which was fantastic. We put it on our website. We got a really good response in that thirty-one days. In the end, one hundred and thirty-three defendants completely paid off and went forward with a fresh start, which means that we rolled everything back to what they owed at the very date of judgment. So we took off twenty percent late fee, one hundred dollar bench warrant fee, thirty dollar show cause fee, and you can see how a small ticket could become a four or five-hundred dollar item. So that was fantastic. And then for people that could not pay, but entered into a payment plan, we recalled the warrant, and then they were able to go ahead and work with the court. So the philosophy of the court is, if you work with the court, the court will work with you. Set up a payment plan, we do not have a minimum. Find something that you can do within your budget and stick with it until it's paid off, and it's as simple as that. So we're really encouraging people not to be afraid to come into court, and that we want to work with you. This year is the twentieth anniversary of having a Circuit Court caseworker right in our court. Circuit Court runs our community service programs for all the District Courts, and about twenty years ago, our court was the pilot, that they had somebody come and have an office right in our court. And that means that people don't have to go downtown to start their community service or report in. That has worked really well, and in fact, has become kind of a nice way for not only all of the defendants to receive services, but for that caseworker to work with the perp. all of the defendants to receive services, but for that caseworker to work with the probation officers to make sure that the particular placement works well for that person. And the last collaboration is just a fantastic one. Grant, you know that Meyer Gardens is doing that huge renovation right now, and when they started to do that, they realized that they have sculptures and, and statues that they were going to have to put into storage and do some kind of a rotation. And so, they reached out to Grand Rapids Charter Township, which maintains the park in front of the courthouse. We have a collaboration with them, and said, "Hey, would you like a long-term loan of this statue?" And of course, yes was the answer, and it's there. It's beautiful. So, looking forward into the future, last year, we did a 100-case pilot for tax garnishments, for state tax garnishments. So, that went well. Didn't bring in necessarily a lot of money, but we know it works now. We know we can expand it. And so, when people owe money to the court, we can garnish their taxes. Technology, we touched on e-filing. There's an e-warrant project that all the agencies are working together with. We hope that that is up soon. We're scanning in some of our key older records that are going to have to be maintained for 100 years so that we don't have to go to microfilm. And finally, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission is up and running, and the, one of the first things that we are going to have to do differently in our court is something that we did as a pilot program a couple of years ago, and that is having defense attorneys at first, at first appearance at arraignment. And so, to prepare for that, we changed our court schedule from only Wednesday morning arraignment to arraignment Monday, Wednesday, and Friday afternoons. And that is so that the Kent County Office of the Defender can staff that. So, instead of having them have to have three attorneys with us for one morning, they can have maybe one attorney three times a week. And again, that was something that is so quick to say, but it took just a ton of work, especially on, on the part of Bobby Thalen, our case management supervisor, who personally called all law enforcement. Agencies made sure that they knew of this change and so that we had people showing up at court at the right time. So, that's all I have for you for the formal presentation.
All right, great. Any questions for Hillary? Commissioner Ponstein.
Chair Bolter. On the small claims court. Consider it a success when the case is run, run its course and a judgment is made. So, let's say I'm in small claims. A property owner. Damage was done to my property during the eviction lawsuit. Attentive. Paying my debt is, yes, they owe you $5,000 in damages. Where's the court stand after the fact? Because people I talked to say, "We, we never collected." So, we went through all this process to end up with nothing, but then, on the other hand, when it comes to parking tickets, we go the extra mile to make sure the government gets theirs, but someone in a small claims court case. Do we track how many are successful after the judgment's been made and the plaintiff has actually paid back for the damages?
We do not track those numbers. And you're absolutely right. Getting the judgment is only the tip of the iceberg. It's just the start of the journey, really, for a plaintiff, and then it's up to them to collect. We do have MichiganLegalHelp.org is a fantastic reference. State Court website has a self-help center. Our clerks help people with the process of knowing what to do, so that's the information piece. But you're right, the legwork is completely up to that individual, and that is definitely a frustration.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So, uncollected judgments, that's the vein of our existence.
Yes.
Couple of questions. I, I haven't seen your revised sheet, and I'm going to guess that your revised page nine is going to take away the $16 million windfall I thought we had.
Yes. Yes, that was more of a dream, apparently, than an aspiration, but yeah, that was an extra zero. So, thank you.
So, is the difference, though, between those last two numbers, the total money assessed and the total money collected? I think that's, you're collecting about 80 percent of your assessments, 75 percent?
Right.
Does that just accumulate, or do you eventually collect all of that?
You know, there, it's, and some of that money, that, that collection is through work, so it's not all dollars. So, we credit people with $10 per hour if they're on work crew or if they do community service. But there is a lot that's uncollected.
Does that just accumulate?
It just accumulates.
So, do you have, like, a running balance?
We do.
How much do we have that?
It's over $2 million, close to $3 million.
Does that just fall off, then, at some time?
You know, we, we end up doing, as we work the cases as much as we can with the show cause hearings, and I think we talked last year that now we have people appear in front of the magistrates to do a triage, try to keep, get them back on track to pay something. But eventually, they're going to be closed with monies owing. Once we do everything we can, we can't find that person anymore.
So, is it just not economically prudent to scrap and fight for those last recoveries?
That's right. That's right. Especially people, they move out of state. We have a really transient population, too, a lot of the times, and so, we'll get a good address. We'll work with them for a while, and then the person will fall off. And sometimes, we can never find that person. Yeah.
So, second question I had, I note that the civil case closure metric is 400, what?
55.
55 days. I was thinking that in the circuit court, don't they have a report requirement after one year? Does that apply to district court civil cases?
You know, I would have to go back and look at our report to see if we do. Yeah. I do not believe so, but I would have to check on it.
And then, the last question I have is just an inquiry. We've started out with the mental health court in the circuit court system, and it's always been my thought that that may be a system that may actually work better in a district court setting. Are you engaged in any conversations about that possibility?
The way we, the way we are right now, the court, and I know the judges have spoken about this, absolutely supports the specialty court. So, now, we've got the Veterans Court out in Wyoming as well. We have two sobriety courts, one drug court, and we do refer people for supervision. At this point, we're under-judged, so we, we actually are just about at where we would need three judges. And I would anticipate that that might be a future project once we're fully judged. But at this point, we don't have the capacity, unfortunately.
I would encourage you to keep the option open.
Thank you. We will.
Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm looking at page five of your report, and the expected versus actual, 2017 to 18, looks like you're expecting all your numbers to be down under civil infractions. Are we becoming more civil? I mean, what do you attribute that to, that we're expecting, you know, less tickets for traffic? People are driving better? I'm not sure about that. Anyway.
That's another dream, right?
Yeah.
So, what, what we found was that during the recession, tickets went down because departments laid off.
Right.
Road patrol. And so, we would have, you know, we, our, our county was in a lot better shape, but other counties statewide would be down to sergeants on the road and so on. So.
We had our challenges, too.
Yeah, and we did. We did. So, I think we had a bump when we brought more people back onboard to be on the road, and I think that's, it's evening out, basically. So, when I look at our numbers, we're back more to what they, they had been before that, that bump up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skiggs.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Hillary, and everyone over at the 63rd Court. Two kudos and two questions. One, I'm excited to hear about the warrant and traffic and parking ticket waiver program. That's fantastic and moving in the right direction to try to make sure that we're not continually to push people into cycles of poverty and cycles of being sent fees that they just have no chance to be able to pay back, but at the same time, making sure that people are, are held accountable for their infraction. Also, very excited to see the implementation of the public defender at arraignment. That will be extraordinarily helpful, and I'll come back to that. I guess I'll skip three in the, in the interest of time, so I'll come straight to the part about public defender at arraignment. I wonder if that's going to help us set, make, make sure that our, our judges are having the opportunity to set bail at a, at a level which, which defendants. So, I'd be interested when we see you next year.
They come in next year. I think so.
I think so. Well, when we see you next, if we could get that, some, some bail information put into this, put into the packet. You know, what is the average bail amount? How long are people staying in the jail pre-trial? If we can, again, work to find ways to make sure that, you know, at this, at this time of near or full employment, that we're, and, and out of basic humanity, that we're making sure that people, again, aren't falling into the cycle of poverty, losing their jobs, losing their cars, losing their, their homes because they can't pay the mortgage, their kids, if they don't have any alternative because they're in jail awaiting trial because bail was set. Really interested to hear your report.
Thank you, and thank you for that comment. We'll, we'll take that back and see if we can pull something together on that for you.
Commissioner Thalen.
Chair, want to add my thanks and especially recognize and appreciate the customer focus, the citizen focus of your work, so thanks a lot for that. That's certainly notable. Have just one kind of nitpicky question, and that's related to the outcome, the second outcome measure there that we already talked about, the prelim exams concluded within 28 days. And I know you're looking into why that's dropping, but I'm a little bit curious about that it has been at around 90 percent for three straight years.
Yeah.
But the target continues to be 75 percent, which feels, is that something you're thinking about adjusting, or?
You know, that's, that's actually a state court administrative office.
Well, that's the minimum that, that they set.
That they want us to, to have set, so, yeah. I, I see what you're saying, though. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Hillary? All right. Thank you, Hillary, for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate all your information.
Thank you.
All right, on to item five. Commissioner miscellaneous. Do we have miscellaneous today? Commissioner Ponstein.
I just wanted to add quickly, this past weekend, I was going through the obituaries, looking at a friend of mine, he passed away, but I noticed that Paul Land had died. He's a longtime resident of the Granville community and did a lot of things for the greater. Now, just passing and, and bless for his family.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned until June 12, 2018.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.